Council, I'll call this Chisholm City Council meeting to order September 27th, 2023. Susan, would you please take roll call?
Yes.
Councilor Halverson.
Present.
Councilor Michaela Rahah.
Present.
Councilor Thornton.
Here.
Councilor Hallaba.
Present.
Councilor Vaki.
Here.
Mayor Lance.
Here. Hey, council, we would look to adopt the agenda. We have one correction, number three under myself. It's sitting out in front of you for resolution 0923-67 with the correction on the cost of the aggregate. So with that correction, I would look for a motion to approve or adopt the agenda.
I'll make them up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Fledge of allegiance.
Fledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome, everyone. Is there any public participation, Murdy?
No.
Council reports. Jed, how about we start with you tonight?
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I attended the Public Utilities Commission meeting, uh, the working session on Monday and the Strong Town meeting last night.
Thank you, counselor. Councilor Michaela Rahah, good evening.
Good evening. I attended an HRA meeting and a working session earlier this week.
Thank you. Counselor Vaki?
You know what, Mr. Mayor? No report from you tonight.
Oh. Counselor Fulton, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, no formal report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Horverson, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I attended the Strong Towns meeting last night, the working session the night before. The working session was the last week or whenever, and uh, I was also at a redhead with a trail tractor. And we came up with a squelcher work, and I think that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, for myself, obviously, we had a working session at the beginning of the week where we discussed, um, obviously, budgeting was a big part of the conversation. Um, today Governor Walz was actually in town. He was over in Hibbing to look at the Detroit Diesel project going on. He came over and wanted to see how we were spending our money at our public safety building. So it's not always, every day you get to welcome a governor. So obviously, I wanted to thank him and the others that were there with their bipartisan support to help us get to where we are today. And uh, that's all I have going on. City ambulance director, Tiffany. Good evening. No report? Okay. Party chief. Yes, good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I'll just start off with our third quarter calls, July, August, and September. Started off in July with 25 calls, which has been kind of the norm the last couple of years. That's on the higher end, but we've been averaging 20, 25 calls. August, we went down to 12. So we're on a downward trend, which is a good thing. And so far, almost at, in September here, we're at seven. And that's, we have an eye camera last week. We had seven calls in a month. So that's a good thing for us. So 44 total for the second quarter, 134 for the year. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we attended a joint meeting and, or a joint training in Hibbing, hazmat awareness. I know ambulances there also. They had one involved in it, but uh, for us, it was more informational. The fire had their hazmat team up there and more equipment, few scenarios, why you would call them, that kind of stuff. But uh, yeah, it was a great meeting, good information for all the area fire chiefs, so. And then tomorrow, I am attending a meeting in Evergreen. They are closing down their fire department at the end of the year. So since we border them to the north, they border us to the north, French to the west, Cook to the north, Cook, South, I'm sorry. And then uh, King Great Scott and Mike San. So having me with all the area fire chiefs, the state fire marshals office, and the county to see what to do with their territory, expanding it, see who's gonna take it, maybe all of them, maybe only one does. Who, we don't know. So we will find more out tomorrow on that, and I will have a report for you guys on my next report, see what happens. So the, the mines come up as far as that, but it's not, you know, it's never a good thing when we lose an area fire department, but I uh, was told it's, it's low membership. It's hard to get people in, you know, in the country like that. And I think they'll only have six, and you just can't build six people. So that's all I have right now.
To add an engine one that we can maybe acquire.
I can probably guarantee their equipment's older than us.
Oh, well, okay then.
So, but they do a good job of what they have. They, I mean, they have a large coverage area.
I was gonna ask you, how many miles do you know?
It's a little smaller than ours. If I had to guess, I would guess their coverage area is probably around 80 square miles, 70 or 80. You know, we're around 100 for us, but yeah, it's not a good thing that they're going away, but if you don't got the numbers, it's hard to run fire there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, chief, and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Police chief, Aaron, good evening.
Um, no formal report. I'll cover what I have on my agenda.
Okay, thank you. Building official zoning, Mandy, good evening. City engineer, public works, I will uh, just say they are out right now with the bonding committee, that is the host bonding committee. So they are touring different range communities and wish them the best of luck. And hopefully, we can keep building on what the success that we've had over the last couple of years. First night I haven't skipped Larry in a long time. City parks, trails, Bridgette, good evening.
Good evening, no report.
City library supervisor, Katie, good evening.
I'm Laura Persnick.
City attorney, Brian.
Uh, no formal report, mayor. I'm happy to field questions if there are any.
Any questions for our attorney? City clerk treasurer, Eileen, good evening.
No formal report.
Okay. And city administrator Scraba is out with Jim and Larry, so good luck to them. Moving on, consent agenda, which consists of the list of bills, communications, communications. I, I do want to note the resignation from our ambulance service of two individuals. Um, you know, obviously, life is busy for a lot of people. They come in and they do a lot for the community. Um, sometimes it gets too busy. Sometimes life moves in a different direction. But I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to Jess and Adam for everything that you've done. Um, Jessica was one of the founding members of the new service here. She came over from our previous staff. And this department would not be where it is without you, Jess, so thank you very much for everything that you did. Moving on with communications would be the August 23, 2023 police commission meeting minutes, minutes of previous city council meetings, September 12th, September 13th, payroll and overtime. Look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Make motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No unfinished business. Moving on, ambulance director Tiffany, good evening.
Good evening. I just have a few things on the agenda today. Number one is going to be the approval to purchase the large items inside of the ambulance. Um, a little bit of backstory on this, the reason why we're hoping to purchase it now instead of later closer to the delivery of the ambulance is the prices are going up October 1st. So.
Significantly?
Uh, yeah, 2% and 3% depending on the piece of equipment. Um, and then they go up again December 1st and usually again April 1st. So doesn't pay too late on them.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I got time. Ask some questions? Okay. Couple of things here, yes. I've got notes all over the place here, so pardon me. Um, so you're looking for a cardiac monitor, right? Okay. And a Lucas, what is that?
That is a VR device. It does the manual compressions.
A stair chair?
Stair chair, that is for getting patients usually out of, but sometimes into houses and other buildings if they're unable to walk.
Oh, excuse me. A power load, including floor plate? What is that?
Yep, and that also includes the EMS pot. I forgot to write that in there, but it is on the quotes that are in the packet. So the power load is the portion, and the floor plate is the portion inside of the ambulance, built into the ambulance, so post on the cops. Brings it into the ambulance for you and locks it in place. So it's a lot of back injuries.
And then so, um, you've got some quotes here. Are these the only quotes that you did get from Stryker?
Um, this is the, this is not the only quotes that we got. Um, it is the least expensive quote that I got. And this is all of the stuff that we are already using in the other two ambulances and have maintenance contracts with them already. So it would be adding like products. Um, it would be very detrimental to have different brands of things we use in different ambulances.
Want all the same brand?
Yep, so you can jump in any ambulance to be able to work everything the same.
Can, um, I know there's no, you don't have formal numbers on this approval to purchase. So can you, can you break us down exactly how much you're, you're actually asking for?
So that would be the $94,000, $240,95 plus the $28,703, $49.
Which comes out to $122,944.44.
Thank you, Adam. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, so, okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
And thank you. Uh, I'm gonna just kinda talk about our last meeting. You said that you weren't able to find grants and stuff like that. I did some research. Just the librarian in me, I think it is. Um, I did find some, um, grants out there that you guys could apply for, for, for ambulance service and for EMS and for fire and stuff like that. I, I wrote a whole huge list here. And also, there's a bill out right now. It's HF 2473 in the house, and it's a rural, rural, how do you say that? Rural?
Rural.
Ambulance Service Staffing Grant Program. And they're establishing it, and so it's going through right now, and hopefully that, that will pass. But um, I kinda wanted this stuff on record in case chief, um, fire chief wanted to take a look at it too. But um, the, the DNR, excuse me, the DNR State of Minnesota has grants out there.
Those have to go through the fire service, and we're not able to, eligible for that.
Oh, so you've looked at that one?
Yes.
The Launch Minnesota Grants? Have you been on that site?
Those ones, no. Um, I know we've, we've, in the past, done, uh, been able to receive grants and discounts from Stryker and some of their AED programs and those things in the area, but for the actual capital equipment, not been able to find something we're eligible for.
Um, there's, there's a grant out there called the EMS Relief Grant. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities also has a whole bunch of grants on their website for all departments. Um, there's a grant out there from Minnesota Energy Group, responders grant. Um, there's another one from Homeland Security and Emergency Management Division of the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. I found that. Uh, there's another one, EMS Funding with the Department of Health in Minnesota. And FEMA.gov has some grants as well. So I just, there's so much money that we're putting right now, I feel, like into the, our public safety building. And I, we're, we, and yes, we need to make sure that we're up on our EMS services and, you know, fire protection services and, and police, but I do feel that we need to make sure that we are utilizing the taxpayers' dollars in a way that we can justify for everything. And, and doing that is also looking for grants.
And a lot of these grants too, that you find, April, they're, they're usually specific to one, you know, what you're looking at. So I mean.
I text you all the time, you know?
Right, right.
It was just some food for thought.
For only first responder agencies and also only fire agencies. Um, us being only an EMS agency does disqualify us from some of those grants too. So, yes, and especially like the staffing grants, those are usually for, um, initial training. So that also doesn't, oh, I missed this situation. Um, the LMC, that's very convenient, thank you. Um, and the, the launch one, I would definitely need to look into though.
Uh, looking at grants is, is always a good thing, no doubt about it, but I do believe we transitioned this purchase from our ARPA dollars. So really, there's no effect on the taxpayer for, for this stuff.
Yep, this would be from the, of the funds.
But, but yeah, we're, we actually took this out of the, out of the budget for next year.
I know we had a teach fund.
Cause we're taking it out of the.
Separate, separate for fire only.
Yeah. So this is coming out of our ARPA dollars that we got from COVID.
And it's 100% paid for?
It will be out of the.
Say $400,000 that we need to spend.
Yeah, I mean, Eileen can explain more than I can.
This money's coming out of a pot that needs to get spent.
Yes.
Yeah, the deadline to, to spend our obligated was December 31st, 2024.
Thank you for explaining that, and thank you for letting the public know as well, you know, cause if I'm questioning it or asking questions, they are too.
Sure.
I appreciate that, you guys. Thank you.
And April, I also phoned a Minnesota grant writer that she's won like 30 or 50 grants she's written this past year or two. So I sent her, reached the administrator not too soon.
Right, council. That being said, I would look for a motion in support to put, purchase the expensive equipment before it increases and before we lose our funding dollars.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Murdy. Uh, this will be another one where the EMS individuals on the council will have to abstain, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you. Two more. The next thing is a request to finish up and then submit upon finishing my ALS, part-time ALS license. So this is something that has been, kind of been worked on since I've gotten here. It's been worked on since before I got here, from what I understand. So what this would allow us to do is utilize the three paramedics that are already on payroll as paramedics in our service area as a primary response unit and also on transfers. Um, yeah, what are your questions on that?
I think it's excellent. Increasing the quality of care for the community, and this is fabulous, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, because you know, I don't, I don't know a lot about this stuff.
Absolutely.
We're a, we're BLS, right?
Yes.
Can you explain to, to, to me what that is and what we're asking?
So BLS is your basic life support. Without variances, you're only able to administer five medications, which would be oral six noun Narcan, oxygen, aspirin, nitro, Narcan. And then you also, so an EMT class is about six months long, where the majority of the paramedics in the area are found through the Masadi program, which is accredited as a two-year applied science degree. So um, with ALS, we're going to be adding, I have a little list, approximately 40 medications. Um, also, we're able to add a lot more procedures as in intubation, rapid sequence intubation, where we can take over an airway prior to somebody losing it. Uh, we can also do a lot more with cardiac medications. Um, we can start utilizing the EPATH protocol, so if you're having a widow maker or a big heart attack, um, we can bypass the local hospitals and go straight to a cath lab instead of calling somebody else to do it, which of course, that all takes time. And it also gives us the ability to administer those medications that can have a greater effect on somebody's outcome. So if you're living at the edge of our service area, which is about, ooh, I did the math on it. It's part of the application, about 38 minutes from the time we leave the hall to the time we get to the furthest or in our service area, approximately 422 square miles. Um, we can give you those medications once we get there as opposed to calling another neighboring ALS service to come give them for you, which is awesome and something we're still going to be utilizing under this model, I'm sure, because we have three medics so far. Um, but it gives us the ability to give those cares that much sooner.
And we would be able to give those cares with those three people when they're working only, right?
Yes. So it's a part-time ALS license that is actually added on top of our full-time BLS license. So, and we have zero obligation to staff paramedic at any time throughout the year, once we get the license. It's kind of a do the best you can situation. So um, we currently have three medics employed already that are working at BLS level, because we do not have the ALS license. And we also have four of our EMTs that are on the payroll that are in the paramedic class in Masadi.
That's wonderful.
And other ALS interests in the area.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would look for a motion, council, to um, allow the application to go through, or smit, dismissal of the application.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Second. Thank you, Murdy. Susan, would you please just take a roll call vote on these?
Yes. Councilor Halverson.
Aye.
Councilor Michaela Rahah.
Aye.
Councilor Thornton.
Aye.
Councilor Hallaba.
Abstain.
Councilor Vaki.
Abstain.
Mayor Lance.
Abstain. Motion carries. Great work.
One more. I can't think of the right order too. So now that we've passed that, one of the few things I, one of the two things I have left to do is in a letter of support from the state.
That seems like a no-brainer, council.
I will also be having to request letters of support from outlying areas too, so.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to accept a letter of support. Thank you, Murdy.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Susan, take a roll call please.
Councilor Halverson.
Aye.
Councilor Michaela Rahah.
Aye.
Councilor Thornton.
Aye.
Councilor Hallaba.
Abstain.
Councilor Vaki.
Abstain.
Mayor Lance.
Abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along, party chief, Chris, welcome back.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. So I applied for a DNR 50/50 grant, and I'm looking for council approval to accept the funds of $3,375. And this is to purchase two high-pressure, high-volume pumps for our tenders. Our pumps on those tenders are well over 30, maybe over 40 years old, and we have had issues with them the last five to 10 years. So it is time to replace them.
Congratulations. I'm very proud of you, you and your department.
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
April, you got it?
Sure.
You're good.
Good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, myself. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
We've got one more.
Well, thank you for the last one.
I'd say, uh, well, I asked for approval for a bid of $6,793 from the state, it was a state bid. So Jesus, we could find the by-radios for our new truck that we're considering. It does not come with the heavy goods or anything like that. They took that on hold.
Would this be in your teach fund? Would this be considered?
Not in our teach fund, but I believe we do have the money in our budget.
And our equipment, yeah.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, myself. Motion carries. Thanks again, chief. Chief Manner, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll start this long conversation. Um, trying to make that too long. And one of the things, um, the police department over the years has stayed fluided, um, has changed its dynamic. It has set up several times since I've been there, well, in all the years I've been there, actually several times since I've been chief, we changed the makeup and, and um, the direction our department has gone. And we, at one time, we had two, at one time, we had two sergeants, two lieutenants, three lieutenant, two sergeants, three lieutenants, a captain and a chief. Um, and at one time, we were down to a chief and two captains. As you know, um, this spring, um, early summer, Captain Hager retired, and um, he was our only captain at the time and left that void. So the police commission was going to look for a new captain. Um, and it's not your minute yet, um, cause that's the previous meeting before, but we did have interviews on September 6th. We interviewed both from interior and exterior of the department, which was the first time we ever looked at doing promotions outside of the department, bringing in outside people. One, one of the reasons is we didn't have a lot, our department is so young. Um, most of my department does not qualify for a captain. And after the interviews on September 6th, uh, there were several meetings for the commission to come to a conclusion. But for your information, so you know, it'll be in the next minutes, the commission wanted to go back to two captains. Let's structure it the way we were looking at one time, and so we put on a patrol captain and an investigation captain. And patrol captain is, um, congratulations to Lieutenant Brock, Justin Rock, who moved up to captain, and investigation captain, Jim Buchat. So tonight on the agenda is a resolution for you to reestablish Jim Buchat's power for his recovery.
Welcome back, Jim. Congratulations, good thinking outside the box. Um, and congratulations to Captain Rock.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and it, it was thinking outside the box, and it's looking like it's, I'm very optimistic. This is, um, this is a good move.
Great.
That's great to hear.
Perfect.
Right, council. Thank you, Travis.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
First one we could all vote on tonight. Okay, moving on. Eileen, clerk treasurer, good evening.
Good evening, mayor. Could you give me the numbers, council? So I have a couple of hires on the agenda. First is for council to set the truth in taxation public hearing date. Uh, I've requested we do that on Wednesday, December 20, 2023, um, to be held at 6:01 PM.
Right, council. I believe that fits in nicely with our council meeting, and since we'll already be here.
Motion.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is to set the preliminary tax levy. So as you know, we've met several times with department heads, uh, with Stephanie Scraba, um, and had requests, discussions about the budget. So I think we're in a good place to set that level. So I'm looking forward to, to your, to what you propose.
Well, thank you very much, Eileen. Thank you for all your hard work through this. Yeah, we did meet three, I believe, three times, and uh, most of them were lengthy meetings, so uh, you all did a very good job. Our department heads, supervisors, everyone did a great job, so thank you very much. Right, council, I would look for a, you know, a number if we can set this. I believe we did discuss that in our working session.
Mr. Mayor, I know we did talk about two different numbers. I'd like to start with one of the first things we were talking about, the 10%. Like, it's, you know, our staff has a good job on our budget, and we're doing really well right now, and I think, you know, doubling the other number, I don't, I think it's just too much on the taxpayer to go that high.
Again, it's just preliminary too. It can always go down, in case something comes up.
Can't go up.
Can't go, can't go up.
We can go down.
And looking at everybody around us, seems to be setting theirs at the maximum levy, you know, in all the different communities. Virginia just went third, you're 21%. Uh, school's set preliminary at the max, you know, it's just, I'm fine either way. Uh, our, our staff did a great job, but I hate to have something come up and.
Well, I'll be honest, for me, um, I, I, uh, we have, since I've sat in this chair, we have done so much as a council. And we have so many good things going on in this town right now. One of the things that I really look forward to is road projects. It's milling overlay, et cetera, et cetera. It's something that the taxpayers see, which is important. Um, plus, some of our roads need it, and that's important too. So I- So I personally err on, on the higher side. Um, I, I totally get what you're saying. And obviously, like I said in our working session, the goal for me would be to get it as low as we possibly can. But at the same time, you don't wanna handcuff yourself either. So, I mean, I guess I would, you know, I'm gonna listen to everybody before we make a motion or anything. But, uh, I, I guess I would lean on the fifteen percent side.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I, yeah, I tend to agree more with Travis on this for now because of this preliminary. And we can lower it by the end of the year. We are more sure of our final budget numbers at the end of the year, we can certainly lower it. But as you said, we, we can't go up and depending on how things are looking, we might need it. So I, I think same thing happened last year. We started high and ended up coming down. And I think that's good strategy rather than being, just because we can't go up if we lock in at ten. I think I would favor fifteen as an initial preliminary levy.
Counselor Fulton, any comments? Ms. Michael Raja, thoughts?
I'm also most comfortable with fifteen as the preliminary. Just knowing all of the projects that we've talked about, knowing that we can, we can bring it down, but we can't go back up. I, I, I would be most comfortable with fifteen.
I'm gonna go with Jed on this one, uh, ten percent. Um, if you look back in the past years, we haven't gone past ten percent. We haven't gone.
Then, yeah, on our final number, we haven't gone past ten percent.
Right, correct. On the final number, yes, Mr. Mayor, so.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm gonna listen to everybody's.
But I think it's important to note too, at our working session, you know, when we looked at budget, you know, well, not budget, but when we looked at our numbers overall, you know, with our public safety building and the arena and, and those other things, you know, we're less than nine percent operating where we're sitting. So I think, again, um, I, I, you know, vote how you want, but, but I do, I do think that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Yes, our goal would obviously be to get five or lower in my eyes. But at the same time, we do have a lot going on. There is a public safety building being built. Um, we do have an arena that needs a lot of work. And I, you know, like Jed or, uh, like Marty said, I think, I, I don't know that we want to handcuff if something does happen.
I would say a little conversation that we had today, you know, obviously with some different representatives that were touring the public safety building. And, you know, first thing Governor Walz said, he said, well, what's next? What do you need next? More money. Um, you know, especially with that arena, we're one point eight million dollars short. And he said he was gonna go to work with Representative Lozegard and work to, uh, you know, find ways to help communities like ours. So even if we're gonna have ten percent, fifteen percent, you know, we might have to find some money to come in to get this project going. You know, we might find some other monies that come our way that we might have to chip in and, um, matching dollars. Counselor Hocky?
I will, um, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to set the initial levy at fifteen percent.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Eileen, I'm so sorry to put you on the spot here. When we were discussing the most recent budget updates, we got the deficit down to, it was a hundred and something thousand. Do you remember what that number was?
I think it was one hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Hundred and sixty, one sixty-eight.
Correct.
Setting the initial levy at fifteen percent.
It'll generate three hundred and thirty, or twenty-three thousand approximately.
Okay, and ten percent would put us at?
At two hundred and fifteen.
Okay, so that only, just, I, I just wanna make note of what that buffer is that we're talking about here.
Yeah, good point. Any more discussion? Susan, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Halverson.
Aye.
Counselor Michael Raja.
Aye.
Counselor Thornton.
Aye.
Counselor Halla.
No.
Counselor Hocky.
Aye.
Mayor Lance.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Request, uh, from the chamber for a Halloween pet parade. You can see on here, uh, Chisholm Area Chamber of Commerce would like to request barricades on Lake Street during the Halloween events, Lake Street Trick or Treat and Halloween Pet Parade. Events will take place on Monday, October thirtieth, beginning at three P M. Shannon has spoken with Chief Manor and I've added verbiage in the advertising, asking people to have their pets updated on vaccines, leash at all times. And they are requesting to have Lake Street barricaded off after the entry of keyboard liquor, the alley of Kiwanis Park from two-thirty P M to seven P M for both events. The actual pet parade begins at Kiwanis Park and will end in front of the chamber office. Yeah, a great, uh, festivity that happens in the community. It's always busy and, you know, people come from everywhere. It's great. So, especially the Lake Street Trick or Treat. It's a great event. So, Council, I would look for a motion to approve the request from the chamber.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, uh, the solar panel contract for the public safety building. So in your attachment, uh, this is what we had talked about previously, but now we have the actual agreement here in front of us. So again, this was something that comes with the, uh, B three funding, um, something that was mandated with the, uh, new building. So unless there's any questions or concerns with the contract, I would look for a motion to approve it.
Make the motion, sir.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Cheyenne. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is Resolution zero-nine-two-three-dash-six-seven. So it's the cooperative agreement with St. Louis County for twenty-twenty-four, uh, the aggregate crushing program. You know, some of this will be used at the public safety building. A lot of it will be used for Larry to use on alleys or streets and wherever they see fit. Um, this is something that we do, do every year. I think it's just a little early this year because, uh, the sites have changed. So unless there's any questions, not that Jim's here to go into it, but I, you know, did talk to him briefly before the meeting. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve Resolution zero-nine-two-dash-two-three-dash-six-seven for three thousand.
Eleven thousand, four hundred.
I was looking at, I was looking at the number. Thank you. Do the dollar move. Thank you, April. Three thousand tons was.
Support.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, under miscellaneous, I would just like to briefly state, uh, we do have upcoming openings in our boards and commissions. Uh, these will be posted inside of City Hall. Our airport authority has one position open. E D A has one position open. Our library board, one position open. Planning and zoning has two positions. P U C has two positions. Parks, Trails and Rec has two positions. Uh, police commission has one. Um, Central Air Range Sanitary Sewer District has one. And the H R A board has openings for four, for just, so, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything else under miscellaneous? No?
Can, may I connect just make a comment?
Yes.
Everything about the H R A, those, um, um, are gonna come open, uh, the end of January's, the current member will be there.
Perfect. So if there's interest, please, uh, stop down to City Hall. Please reach out to one of your, uh, city councilors. Um, you know, these boards are what, uh, keeps the city moving and the projects you see around you, so. If there's nothing else, Council, look for a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Halla. Thank you, Counselor Hocky. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everybody have a good night.